Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can. Good evening.
I'm on the telephone, I cannot get a, I cannot get logged in.
I can't see ya.
That's because I said I'm on the telephone.
Okay, I have the telephone icon on mine instead of, instead of your face, I don't see ya.
I am only on the phone, I am not, I cannot get linked in with the Zoom link that they sent me.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, I hear you fine, Mr. Curbeline.
I hear ya.
Okay, the link that ends with 10809, I cannot get linked in.
Is Amanda there? Maybe she can help us.
Yeah, let me, let me check.
I'm here. I'm here, but what is it doing when you click it?
It times out.
Times out. Can you go to our website, lcfla.com? You can get the link from there in case the one you have is messed up. Tell me when you get there.
Wait, I don't want to lose my agenda items. If I lose them, I'm in, okay.
I, I can hear Mr. Curbeline fine on the phone, if he's able to stay on the phone, I don't know about.
I'll stay on the phone until I'm connected. I'm, I'm looking for my link to Lake City, there we go. Homepage, Lake City.
Okay, scroll all the way to the bottom, under events, you'll see the Lake City Council meeting for tonight. Listed on the calendar.
Maybe my computer, I'm having a problem loading that page also.
Oh, maybe you're having an internet failure. Comcast or something.
It says that I'm logged in. I'll be darned, it must be the internet because it won't click to that page either.
Shoot, well, I can hear you just fine too, if you want to just stay on the phone.
Yeah, I'll stay here.
Yeah, I can hear you well. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna, you're gonna do the pledge?
I will, and I'll do it myself.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got Mr. Hill for the invitation, so you're, you're ready for that? Okay, is nobody ready?
I'm myself from the city. I'm attending the meeting by phone because my computer won't log in anywhere.
Okay, uh, I'd like to call the October the 19th, 2020, meeting of the City Council for the City of Lake City. And if, if you would allow me to do the pledge of allegiance. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, my agenda is a little out of, but I was calling Mr. Hill to do the invitation at this time.
Let, let us pray. Dear heaven Father, thank you for allowing us to see another day, Father. Dear heaven Father, we ask that you continue to guide us and lead us in the way that you would have us go, Father. Father, we ask that you continue to watch over our nation through this pandemic. Now, Father, we ask that you just bless our meeting, may it be pleased in your sight, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 Ms. Sachi, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Mr. Jefferson?
Here.
Ms. Moses?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Curbeline?
Here.
Mr. Helfenberger?
Here.
Keith Gilmore?
Here.
Okay, uh, this time, we don't have any proclamation to amend, so we'll go to approval of the agenda, so a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, I believe we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, Ms. Sachi, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, uh, next is presentation, we have our second public hearing for the fiscal year 2019, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, uh, Ms. Melissa Fox.
Yes, hi, good evening. Um, wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of background, on October 5th, the Citizen Advisory Task Force met, and it was their recommendation that the city proceed with submitting an application in the uh, commercial revitalization category with the, also the recommendation that after this project is complete, that the city pursue housing rehabilitation projects um, for up to seven years. Um, also on that evening, on October 5th, City Council voted to move forward with developing an application in the commercial revitalization category. And the purpose of tonight's second public hearing is to review the items in that application as well as the budget, and then to, you know, we'll take any, uh, public comment as well as any questions. So I'm gonna go through the the proposed project. So the service area is a citywide service area. Um, it's the corporate limits of the city of Lake City. The lives of all citizens of the city are enhanced by the commercial area in the downtown area. The city of Lake City's downtown commercial district has been struggling with a high vacancy rate in the downtown area. The downtown businesses, local government, and the city residents need help in revitalizing Lake City's downtown project area. With the construction of the proposed improvement, the city hopes to help the economic environment for the existing merchants and draw new businesses into the downtown area. So project area number one is the downtown Lake City Wilson Park Commercial Revitalization Project Area. The activities included in the project area are as follows. O3F is the activity number in its open space parks and playgrounds activity. The activity proposed in this application is the construction of an amphitheater in Wilson Park. Wilson Park is located at 232 Northeast Hillsborough Street in Lake City, Florida. An active amphitheater in Wilson Park will draw area residents into the downtown area for community events. Holding events which brings a large group of people into the downtown area is a cornerstone of the city's revitaliz- downtown revitalization efforts. So for the budget under O3F, open space parks and playgrounds, construction of an amphitheater, we have a CDBG budget request of 690,000 and a local match request of 15,000. The sources and uses of funds for the project are as follows. So under open space parks and playgrounds, we have a CDBG request of 690,000 with a local match request of 15,000 for a total project cost of 705,000. Under 21A administration, we have a CDBG requested cost of 60,000 with a local match of zero for a total cost of $60,000. Under O3F engineering, we have a CDBG cost of zero, a local match of 35,000 for a total cost of 35,000. So for an overall total, we're requesting $750,000 from CDBG. There is a $50,000 match that the city is looking to put into, you'll be voting on that later on, for a total cost of 800,000. Now, the city of Lake City is committing $50,000 from the city's Community Redevelopment Agency as local match in this application. $35,000 will be used for the engineering line item and $15,000 will be used for the open space parks and playgrounds line item, so for the construction of the amphitheater. The design of the project is complete, the plans and specifications for the project are prepared, and the required permits have been applied for. The city of Lake City is claiming readiness to proceed points for the project, for this project in the application. And thus by doing so, you're gonna actually receive an extra 50 points in your application. Without the funding provided through the Small Cities Commercial Revitalization Program, this project could not be undertaken by the city. The city anticipates it will take approximately 30 months for the project to be complete, including the completion of the environmental review, bidding, construction, and grant closeout. And where that 30 months comes in, that's how long your contract, um, will actually be with the state. If you get it done before that, then you just close it out and you get back in line for the next one. We always include a statement that some of the project, some of the proposed funded activities will be carried out in a flood zone. Um, that will be determined, you know, more specifically once you do your environmental review. Now, if funds are available after completing the primary project, then the following unmet needs or alternates would be addressed. For service area number one, it would still be the citywide service area, and the project, it would be, um, the activity proposed in this application, in this application is the construction of a fountain in the pond at Wilson Park. Wilson Park is located at 232 Northeast Hillsborough Street in Lake City. And additionally, if there are funds left, then they will, um, be used towards, um, lot fencing and landscaping. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the proposed project, the applications are due November 9th. Um, we will have, we have a draft application available at City Hall now. There will be a final copy of the application that will be submitted, um, over to the city by, uh, November 6th. If not sooner.
At this time, we would take public comments, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I think Mr. Bowden wanted to speak.
Hold on, I'm finding him.
Do y'all hear me? I guess I need to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and council members, my name is Glenell Bowden, 1156 Northeast Baskin-Narrows Drive. Uh, I have some of the same concerns and the same comments I had at the first public hearing, uh, concerning this application. Uh, I understand why the city is doing it, but I also believe that it's probably one of the most inconsiderate, misguided, and, um, insensitive application that you can do during this time. It just seems to me that anybody who ride around Lake City, particularly northeast and northwest Lake City, particularly in Mr. Jefferson and Mr. Hill's district, and I don't know who this guy is over there behind, Save-A-Lot between Duval and Bill, and some of those houses in that area, can certainly use some housing rehabilitation money. It just seems to me, um, that the project is misplaced. I think that the city should be concerned about the most vulnerable in our community, that is the seniors, who in need of some housing rehabilitation, some re- revitalization, and those kind of things, and you had an opportunity as a city to apply for that, I looked at the application today, you had commercial, uh, rehabilitation, uh, four different categories, so you couldn't chose housing rehabilitation just as you chose this. And, and I really think i- it is a mistake to go down this road, um, and, and I want to be sure that I, as a citizen of Lake City, is on the record of being opposed to, or, or, or at least in opposition to this being the project that the city should take. Particularly at this given time, you know, in this process, it just seems to me, Mr. Mayor and council, that had the council members, or even those who made a recommendation on the committee, which I'm certainly disappointed in, that, that I, I just can't understand how two members of that could be in the housing business and looking out for affordable housing needs, and not recognize how big of a need it is just for revitalization, just for rehabilitation within our community. I, I, I don't see it, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you've been involved in housing for a long period of time, you're gonna advocate for affordable housing and housing rehabilitation, and, and that's a part of it. But, but today is 2020, so we talking about now. A- and, and the idea that, uh, if we do this now, the City Council, the city of Lake City is committed to housing application for the next seven years. You can't commit, uh, a future council to this for the next seven years, that may be a, an idea, but we don't know what the next city council gonna feel as a priority come two years from now, three years from now, we don't know who the next city manager may or may not be in seven years. Uh, I think that it's, it's, it's good to say that's what you're planning to do, but to say that's what's going to happen, I think really is misleading, uh, to the both in, in this community. It's been said and was repeated, that a budget and a grant application of, of a municipality shows the, the soul and the, and the desires of a community. And, and when a community, you can look at a budget, and when you cut out recreation, when you deal with a program that affects the children, when you deal with programs that does not enhance the quality of life for seniors and and the poor, then the next, that says exactly what your project is up. And I just want to be on record to say that, uh, I think this is a bad idea, uh, in that I think that it was, that the housing rehabilitation, rehabilitation grant would have been, uh, the, the better of the four, and, and I am personally very disappointed that this is the case, and perhaps Mrs. Fox can answer this question at some point in time. Will public comments be a part of the, uh, the grant application, uh, once the application is submitted? Would my comments and those other comments of people who may or may not be in support of this, be a part of that application process, I would like to know that. So, Mr. Mayor, that, that's my comments at this time, during this public hearing process of this, I was speaking to the resolution that they come forth, but thank you for, uh, so much for this opportunity.
Hey, did you want to? This is the public comments, uh, involved this whole process with the resolution, so if you wanted to speak to any particular resolution, I'd want you to do it now, I guess.
Well, I thought you'd deal with a resolution one by one.
They are.
We usually don't take public comments on each one.
I mean, it's only a gentleman, I mean, I, you can't, you telling me, citizens can't speak to a resolution?
If you, if you want to, we can take them one by one, but usually, uh, we don't ask for public comments on resolutions, but since you've asked for it, I will do it.
All right, I will wait until, till the resolution is read, or by the.
All right, any other public comments?
Uh, Mr. Sampson has his hand raised.
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I had a comment, um, I, I know that we've already decided, I guess what's gonna happen with the funds, but I'm, I'm wondering, the $150,000 that's sitting there in the TDC budget to come back to the city, where is that money allocated? This $50,000 we're using here is not coming from that, from reading what's in the agenda packet, so once that money's spent, it looks like the first 150,000 is spent, the city's supposed to get back 150,000 from TDC, I believe that's correct. Where are those funds allocated and where are they being spent?
Okay, if I could answer that one?
Sure.
Okay, th- this, those funds are for design engineering, and, uh, $130,800 of the 150,000 has been spent to date. And in order to get, uh, reimbursed for that, the project needs to be completed.
Okay, so the 130,800 we've spent, we'll get those funds back?
Upon completion of the project, yes.
And then they can be reallocated either toward the budget or toward some other item?
Absolutely.
Okay, as you look at the Wilson Park Plan, um, i- it looks like that's gonna be where we're pursuing it, I think we need to look into other items though concurrently, we don't have to have a focus on just one item. There's multiple items we can look at, and this isn't the only grant available, so I do think it would be time to be looking for some other grants out there for affordable housing. And that's all I've got right now to comment on.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Do you have anybody else wishing to make a public comment at this time?
No other hands are raised.
Okay, we'll move on then, we'll close the public hearing, move into City Council Resolution 2020-101, Curbeline, would you read that by title?
Yes, sir. The Council Resolution Number 2020-101 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the implementation of the long-term and short-term objectives of the City of Lake City Community Development Plan, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, I think Mr. Bowden wanted to speak to each one individually.
I just, yeah, I just, um, Mr. Mayor, a- and to be kind and fair to the process, uh, let me just say this, uh, from this resolution, it'd be the same comment for all three, so you won't need a call, you would not need to call on me again, but I expressed the same concern and the same uh, observation that I made during the public hearing comment, uh, you know, I, I think that the fastest resolution and, and the resolutions to come after this one i- is not a good idea. I think it overlooks the, the needs in our community of the, of the, of the least fortunate and the most vulnerable, and I, I think it put, uh, business over people, and I do understand that the increase of tax base, getting people downtown and all of that, it makes sense. Uh, but however, uh, it just seems to me, I don't know how anybody could ride through their community and see some of the housing that exists, and had thought this was a top product, and I understand this may be the only thing available, as I heard the speaker say just a while ago, but it was not the only thing available at the time the application was put forth. And, um, and so you would not need to call on me again, Mr. Mayor, because I have the same comment for all three. Uh, but I do want to know, and I did not get an answer from, um, Mrs. Fox, and perhaps someone can say this, uh, will public comments be a part of the application process?
Yes, they, they will. Um, what will happen is, uh, draft copies of the minutes are provided in the application, and then if we just provide the draft, if the minutes are not available at the time of application submission, when DEO conducts their site visit, that is one of the things that they will ask for, so minutes of all the meetings are submitted as part of the application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there a motion as to City Council Resolution Number 2020-101?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for the adoption of City Council Resolution 2020-101.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion by council?
Well, I'd, um, comment on, on on this, on this grant, again, I, I feel the same as Mr. Bowden. Uh, and I ask, and I challenge each council member to ride through my district, and Mr. Jefferson's district, and you will see what myself and Mr. Bowden is talking about, on the dilapidated, dilapidated houses, uh, things that need to be done in my district and Mr. Jefferson's district. And, and, and you was, you would, I, I think you would, you would get a different, uh, uh, view about this, and that's all I have.
Anybody else? Ms. Sachi, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, the City Council Resolution Number 2020-102, Mr. Curbeline, would you read that by title?
Yes, sir. City Council Resolution Number 2020-102 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the use of $50,000 and zero cents, repeated, as leverage for the Small Cities Commercial Revitalization Community Development Block Grant application to be submitted by the city to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for federal fiscal year 2019.
Is there a motion as the City Council Resolution Number 2020-102?
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2020-102.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? Ms. Sachi, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. And then City Council Resolution Number 2020-103, Mr. Curbeline, would you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020-103 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the submission of an application to the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for federal fiscal year 2019.
Is there a motion as to City Council Resolution 2020-103?
I move for the adoption Resolution 2020-103.
There.
Then a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Sachi, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, I guess that concludes that part, and I want to thank, uh, Ms. Fox for her participation and her guidance in this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next is person wishing to address council, uh, do we have anybody wishing to address council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
This Glenell Bowden again, 1156 Northeast Baskin-Narrows Drive. Um, I had asked to speak to Adam that you had on the agenda, so I will address it during the public comment, so uh, when it come up, I may or may not want to speak at that time. All right, the next, I think you're gonna bring up an issue concerning, uh, meeting places, and I assume there'll be a discussion about the, uh, the mayor, not the mayor, but the the governor's order in terms of in-person meeting by members of the council. Uh, anybody who watching the news, uh, know that, uh, this COVID-19 i- is not going away, it's not going away. Uh, in Lake City, Columbia County, we, every week, you know, we hearing about a death of some more cases. I'm personally aware of some people, uh, who just recently passed that I know personally, uh, who, who died from COVID-19. Uh, so i- it's here. I said that to say this, that while the governor may have ordered the City Council to meet in person, uh, the, the order does not require it to pull it necessarily meeting public, so I would encourage you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, when you get to that point, that you continue to have, uh, access for the public via Zoom and call in. Um, because there are some of us, I'm in that age group, my wife's in that age group with, with, uh, with, uh, underlying health conditions, so I'm at the age of underlying health conditions, and while I like to come to the meeting, as you well know, I think the, the best option for me and for those who got a fear of COVID, contrary to what some people may think, uh, about it, that we be allowed the opportunity to, to continue to participate in this manner, even while you all there in person, or even if you go to the, uh, to the kind of, uh, to the school board building, um, for a meeting that may attract a larger crowd, that does not mean that all of us want to be a part of that crowd, I've done that in the past. Every time I done that, I've been nervous for the next two weeks, wondering if I put myself or my wife or my family at risk by doing so. Uh, so I would encourage the City Council to, uh, until there is a vaccine, until there's a real handle on this, that we continue to have, uh, access for the public via Zoom, or by toll-free calling, uh, so that those of us who does not want to come and put ourselves at risk, um, uh, or to be in a, a space where, even, even if you got social distancing, uh, uh, we already know that that's not necessarily, uh, a cure-all, or it's a recommendation for the CDC. So, uh, I'm asking the City Council, you, Mr. Mayor, and the council to consider, uh, as you go forward, that continue the same process, even with you being in person, to a lot of us who would rather do it via Zoom or be, or via the, uh, telephone, to be able to do so. I don't know what the cost is, but I think it, it, it's minimal, uh, because as you relates to, to health and welfare of those of us in this community who are, are of a certain age and got a vulnerability when it comes to COVID-19. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I may or may not want to speak to it when you bring it up, but that's my comments, and depending on on, on, on how y'all deal with it, would decide whether or not I want to speak to it at that time.
Next, we have Anthony Newton.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council, just since Mr. Bowden had brought that up, I do think that the council should, um, take wise counsel, and ensure we're spending money, uh, questionably in other places, and I think we ought to make sure that we spend that money to, uh, continue to provide a hybrid setting, um, for the citizens to listen, and I think that shows a level of bridge and concern um, about health conditions and continuing to work, and I just think, I want to echo those sentiments, uh, give him that support publicly, that that is something that we ought to do, uh, without question.
Thank you.
That seems to be it.
Okay, if that's it, then we'll move on, uh, there's new consent agenda. Under old business, we're to open a public hearing on City Council Ordinance Number 2020-2164, final reading. Mr. Curbeline, would you read that by title, please?
I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. City Council Ordinance Number 2020-2164 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, repealing ordinance- repealing ordinance 2016 dash 2081, providing for several ability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The the ordinance repealed is correct in the title. It is incorrect in Section 2. A proper motion will include an amendment for Section 2.
Okay, do we need a motion to correct Section 2?
Well, when you make the motion to adopt it or not?
I got you. Okay, is anybody in the public wish to speak to this ordinance?
No hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and move into adoption of City Council Ordinance 2020 dash 2164. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020 dash 2164 as amended in Section 2 to reflect ordinance number 2016 2081.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms.
Was that Moses?
Ms. Moses.
Okay, I kind of bleeped that. Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay, next, we're to open a public hearing on City Council Ordinance 2020 dash 2166 on final reading. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2166 is an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the City Code Chapter 70, Article 5, which deals with firefighters' retirement, amending Section 70 dash 130, compliance with Internal Revenue Service, Internal Revenue Code, providing for severability, providing for a repealer, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, is there anyone in the public wish to speak for against this ordinance?
No hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and move into adoption of City Council Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2166 on final reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of ordinance Number 2020 dash 2166 on its final reading.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay, next, we're moving to new business, and we have ordinance number, City Council Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2169 on first reading. Mr. Cervelino, would you read that by title?
Yes, sir. City Council Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2169 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the code of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the regulations related to the discharge of firearms to allow hunting on annexed tracts of land upon which hunting had been permitted by Columbia County, Florida, immediately prior to the annexation, providing certain safety regulations, providing for the termination of such hunting upon any zoning reclassification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion as to City Council Resolution 2020 dash 2169?
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2020 dash 2169.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any discussion? This basically just leaves the annexed property with the same rights it had as when it was just in the county, so I think it's a proper thing for us to do. Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the City Council Resolution 2020 dash 2170 on first reading. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
Did you skip 2169 on purpose, sir?
No, didn't. That's the one we just did.
Well, we just did.
Okay, I got two 2169s on my thing. Okay, item item eight on my agenda. Okay, I'm sorry, my apologies, Mr. Mayor. When I read this on line two, I will not be reading Internal Revenue Code. I will read City Code.
Okay.
City Council Ordinance 2020 dash 2170 is an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the City Code Chapter 7, Article 4, Police Officers Retirement Fund, Section 70 dash 100, relating to compliance with the Internal Revenue Code, providing for codification in the code, providing for severability, providing for a repealer, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, is there a motion as to uh, City Council Resolution 2020 dash 2170 on first reading?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of Resolution Number 2020 dash 2170 on its first reading.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay, uh, next, the City Council Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2171. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2171 is an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending Article 2, Section 2 dash 31 of the Code of Lake City, Florida, relating to meetings of the City Council, providing that regular and special meeting locations can be held anywhere in Columbia County, subject to advanced notice requirements, providing for severability, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion as to City uh, Council Ordinance Number 2020 dash 2171?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of ordinance 2020 dash 2171.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Uh, I know that Mr. Bowden spoke on this item, and I believe we had a uh, um, a second individual, Mr. Newton also speak on this item, and and I agree with both of them. I think um, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to continue to have virtual meetings, uh, but it doesn't look like that's the case. And uh, so if we're going to have the in-person meetings, uh, as long as we're under this uh, uh, COVID, I think that um, uh, it would behoove us to allow the public to continue to attend uh, virtually. So I would just like to say that I agree with Mr. Bowden's sentiment and Mr. Newton's sentiment uh, in the interest of public safety, uh, that we continue to allow them to attend the meeting virtually, even if we cannot.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
I agree with uh, the comments of uh, Mr. Bowden, Mr. Newton, as as well as Mr. Green. I think we should continue to allow the public that option. Uh, be until such time that we get from under under this uh, COVID-19. Uh, those that choose to attend, if if that's their option, uh, they would have that option. But uh, I agree, there are many vulnerable people that falls into that category that, you know, that have my concern. So I agree with the previous comments, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay, next is uh, we're moving to resolutions, and the first one is City Council Resolution 2020 dash 114. Mr. Cervelino, would you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 20 dash 114 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement for cost-share assistance with the Swanee River Water Management District to analyze and plan for future water supply needs of the City of Lake City over a 20-year period, and sharing the cost of the planning up to $28,000 no cents.
Is there a motion as to City Council Resolution 2020 dash 114?
I move for the adoption. Go ahead.
Good. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the Resolution Number 2020 dash 114.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? And I'm glad to see this, so we can start planning our utilities and our needs for the next years to come, so I think it's a good one. Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay, next is City Council Resolution 2020 dash 108. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 108 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of task assignment number 12 to the continuing contract with Jones Edmondson Associates Incorporated for the professional consulting services and completion of an alternative water supply feasibility study, and to pay the consultant a not-to-exceed amount of $56,000 in no cents for its services.
Is there a motion as City Council Resolution 2020 dash 108?
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2020 dash 108.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay, next, we have City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 110. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 110 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, ratifying the mayor's extension of the state of emergency arising from the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Is there a motion as to City Council Resolution 2020 dash 110?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the approval of Resolution 2020 dash 110.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion?
I I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. Um, tonight on on the news, Florida was shown to be the state with the highest spike. Um, so we don't know until the first day of the month or the last day of the month if the governor's going to extend the emergency. Is that how that works?
That's the way he's been doing it. I guess he could do it earlier, but uh, that's what he's been doing.
So for the first meeting in November, we would have to um, at decide now how we're going to advertise it, correct?
That's the problem we've had is advertising, because if he does it at the last minute, there's no way around that.
Can we don't it two ways? Stating that if if the governor allows, it would be virtual only, and if not, it would be in-person and virtual?
So we can't do that?
Mr. Cervelino, is that is that legal?
Sounds like it to me.
Okay.
Um, what is what is the date? Forgive me for not having that on the top of my uh, head, but what is the date of our first meeting in November?
November 2nd.
I see. So it would not allow for time for us to uh, wait until the end of the month before we did the advertising?
Right.
We don't have enough time. I see.
And that's what happened to us the first meeting of this month. We didn't have time to advertise it, you know, as a Zoom meeting. Um, you know, I this, you know, that will be my last meeting, but, you know, I'm in that category that that, you know, I just would like to see us have that option um, to make it a Zoom meeting and advertise it as such.
Oh, Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. So I agree with Ms. Moses. I think if we're able to have a virtual meeting, I think it's safer for the public. And um, also, uh, you know, uh, it's just one of those things that if we can do, uh, we should. Um, but I know that we have notice requirements uh, for the clerk's office that they have to abide by. So if if we can notice it as an either or, um, because uh, if we allow the public to attend virtually, uh, either way, then it'll be available virtually. The only question is whether or not we can attend virtually. And I think if the uh, meeting is advertised that way, I don't I don't know. I think maybe the clerk's office or the attorney would know better, but uh, I would certainly uh, want to do it virtually if we could.
All right, Ms. Axie, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the City Council Resolution 2020 dash 111. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 111 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing six aerator replacements at the St. Margaret's Wastewater Treatment Facility, and authorizing the execution of an agreement with SGS Contracting Services Incorporated for a price not to exceed $1,471,700 in no cents.
There are motion as City Council Resolution 2020 dash 111.
Move for the adu- move for the adoption of Resolution 2020 dash 111.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the City Council Resolution 2020 dash 113. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 113 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a union employment agreement with Local Number 2288 of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO.
Is there a motion as City Council Resolution 2020 dash 113?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of Resolution 2020 dash 113.
Second.
And a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next is City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 115. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 115 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, accepting a utility easement from Robert and Jane Collins for the purpose of collection and distribution of stormwater from the Gwin Lake Estates area.
Is there a motion as City Council Resolution 2020 dash 115?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2020 dash 115.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Axie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the City Council Resolution 2020 dash 117. Mr. Cervelino, do you read that by title?
City Council Resolution Number 2020 dash 117 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, accepting a utility easement from John and Shirley Bell for the purpose of collection and distribution of stormwater from the Gwin Lake Estates area.
Is there a motion as City Council Resolution 2020 dash 117?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Dash 22117, please.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
I'm glad to see that we are. I'm glad to see that we are gradually moving along with that Gwin Lake project over there, Mayor.
Me too. Ms. Sacks, you call the roll.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, next, the City Council Resolution number twenty twenty dash one one eight. Mr. Chevron, I'll read that by title.
City Council Resolution number twenty twenty dash one one eight is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of an agreement with TSC Jacobs North Incorporated for the replacement of the complete wastewater clarifier mechanism and all associated equipment located at the Saint Margaret's wastewater treatment facility at a price not to exceed four hundred thirty four thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars in no sense.
Did I lose the mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. There he is.
Okay. Was that me going out?
Yes.
I thank you back with us.
Thank you. Um, so we read uh Resolution twenty twenty dash one one eight. Uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty dash one one eight.
I'll second it.
And a motion and a second in any discussion on this? Uh, I did want to comment on this one, and uh I believe it's one 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 where we spend a lot of money every same order, but it's a very proactive thing to do because since there's new parts and all, if we don't renovate it and get it and hit it again, we could have a bad situation. So appreciate the staff doing this. Ms. Sacks, you call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, the City Council Resolution twenty twenty dash one two zero. Mr. Chevron, I'll read that by title.
City Council Resolution number twenty twenty dash one two zero is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, accepting the bid from and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Florida Phil and Grading Incorporated for improvement to the drainage at Gwin Lake for phases one and two at a cost not to exceed four hundred twenty thousand dollars in no sense.
Is there a motion as City Council Resolution twenty twenty dash one two zero?
Ms. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash two one zero.
One two zero?
One two zero.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Um, Heffler, you know when they're uh gonna get started?
Um, not exactly, but the next step would be that they would uh authorize them to proceed and then it get a pre-construction conference and then get going on it. I know the contractor is uh eager to get this project going and get some dirt moving there, and we've been waiting. This is phases one and two because we didn't have any any uh bidders on phase one. And we only had one bid on this, but I I believe this person will do a good job and it's a local contractor.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Ms. Sacks, you call the roll.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, next we move into uh discussion of possible action on meeting location for future council meeting. I wanted to ask Mandy, uh, if we went to the school board building, would it be a lot more difficult for staff to do the Zoom from that building as opposed to what you're doing it now?
Assuming that they have a sound system, it won't be any more difficult. And I heard that they do.
They have one and they're willing to train anyone if they need it.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Okay.
Yep.
From what I've heard from I think everybody, that the consensus of council is we advertise it if we have to be there, but if we can do it by Zoom, that they wish to do that and allow the public to uh appear by Zoom. Is that the consensus?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bowden mentioned he may want to comment. I don't know if he wants to comment.
No, ma'am. Uh, I I'm satisfied with the direction the council is going in. I appreciate your concern for those of us who are feel at risk.
Okay. All right. And I think that clears it up with the uh staff. So unless they have any questions or comments. Uh, now out of twenty is advisory committee meetings. Uh, I've discussed with Mr. Helfenberger that, you know, this year we've kind of been not able to have a lot of uh committee meetings and all. And over the last few years, we've had less committee meetings than we've had in the past. And I think at one time we had too many. But I do think with what we've got going on in the community that we need to get some committees more active, like the utility committee, the airport committee. Uh, I think the CRA has been a very active committee and done a good job, and I thank Ms. Moses for doing that. But uh, that's what I'll be working on. So I'd like input as to uh what you would like to have on these committees and uh we'll try to get these things moving and more active. Hopefully, if we can do them in person, but we'll just see how we can do them in the future. Any input from council?
Mayor, I uh I spoke with um Joe several weeks ago, and I I spoke with um some of the other county commissioners. And um they they brought to my attention that some of the meetings that they have with the uh different uh projects, they um kind of stressed to me that they would like to have a council council person involved in uh some decision making with the city and the county.
Well, that's why I want to have the utility committee more active where we do get input from the council and the staff and the county and all of us. Because there's a lot of projects going on, and I think it's really important. And what Ms. Helfenberger is doing with these studies, the uh water study, the master plan for the utilities, I think all these are very important for our future. Anything else under that? Next, uh, discussion of possible action approval for the Esri Small Municipal Enterprise Agreement for duration of three years. Mr. Helfenberger.
Okay, this is a request. We're requesting approval for the Esri Small Municipal uh enterprise agreement uh for three years in a amount of twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars a year for access to the Esri term license software. And this is a three-year cost. It's not a one-year cost. Uh, currently, the city uh works with Esri uh to help with their GIS systems and the uh it provides the funds for the licensing of this in order to uh continue to use the service.
This is for the GIS service?
Yes, i- it's just about all of our mapping is done with the GIS service. They do some of the small survey work and uh uh pretty much it's critical for the utilities and and in a lot of other areas for the streets.
That's one thing I was gonna ask. Would this funds come out of utility or partially out of utility?
These funds would come out of utilities.
Okay.
And and, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, my question is, uh, is this a sole source or is this a procurement? Uh, is this something that would have to go out?
Uh, it wouldn't have to go out. It it's kind of like a it's in equivalent to a government type contract and which doesn't require the bidding. The other thing too is that this is uh it's the type of service that uh really doesn't have uh uh another equal to it. Uh, and for that reason, uh, we have been going with it year after year, but I we had a the ability to to cut the cost a little bit by doing a three-year agreement, and I thought that would be helpful.
Of a clarification, Mr. Hefenberger, that you uh this twenty seven uh thousand five hundred dollars, does that represent a three-year period or one-year period?
Three. It's three years period.
Okay.
So it's a little over nine thousand a year. Every time we look, we pull up a a property uh and look at the lot lines and utilities, we use GIS.
Okay.
Mr. Hefenberger, I think the reason there is confusion is in the packet. It says per year. So we just
Yeah, that's yeah, that's wrong.
That's where I got that from.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
So move, man.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Sacks, you call the roll.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. I had a point to discuss affordable housing plan, Mr. Hefenberger, yeah.
Okay, uh, what we're looking to do is uh at the next uh city council meeting on November second, bring forward a resolution that would, if adopted, provide a process for an inventory list for affordable housing. Uh, we're also looking at an ordinance uh and we would uh have a uh a public hearing available on uh the first reading would be November second. The public hearing would be at the November sixteenth meeting. But this ordinance would set a policy and guidelines for affordable housing and for the disposition of city-owned property uh as appropriate for affordable housing. Also, on November second, we're looking at a public hearing on just the list of city-owned property eligible for affordable housing purposes, which would involve a determination by the city whether to approve uh any properties for public for affordable housing. Also, on November second, we're looking at a resolution by the city council to approve city-owned properties uh eligible for affordable housing and determination, the method of disposition. We have other efforts that we're working on too as far as providing housing needs. We have one, we're looking at a tiny home ordinance that is in the development stages right now, but would have a first reading on December seventh and a final reading on December twenty first. This would provide for uh the uh full developments where you have a large piece of property or infill lots where it's too small to build a a regular home. It would also provide for the mother-in-law homes on the same lot as principal structures. And we think this would help in the affordable housing uh needs. We're also looking at uh November second um a resolution to create an affordable housing fund from the sale of city-owned lots and use these funds to match ship funds up to, and you can accumulate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Uh, we could provide, these funds would be used for matches, and we would suggest up to twenty thousand dollars for approved housing rehab, things such as insulation and just basic, basic household items. Uh, we could help uh defray the cost for affordable housing through this program.
Say, you need any action tonight?
No, not in this, but it would, this would start coming up as as I mentioned, a lot of these items would be at the November second meeting with the ordinance followed up on November sixteenth. And then there would be two uh uh in December for the tiny homes ordinance.
Okay, and then out of twenty three is update on EPA Brownfield Coalition Assessment.
Mr. Mayor, could I could I go ask one question? Um, back on twenty-two. So um on December, on November sixteenth, when we have the second reading of the ordinance, then after that, then immediately we'll be able to, if it's approved, um, we'll be able to go into the process of auctioning off those those parcels of of Lake City property um for building of affordable housing.
Yes.
Immediately thereafter. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's that's our our plan to do it immediately uh once we get approvals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then on the uh update on the EPA Brownfield Coalition Assessment, um what we're uh just wanting to make council aware of is that we've been working, the city along with the county, the chamber and BEDC, and the North Florida Economic Development Partnership to have a coalition for uh a brownfield uh assistance through grants. Uh, you're allowed up to six hundred thousand, but we applied for six hundred thousand, we're denied, and we're looking at reapplying under at a four hundred thousand dollar amount. Uh, the sum's more than enough enough to cover phase one assessments for project sites along Highway four forty-one and the Marion Street corridor. We feel the lower dollar amount would increase our chances of being awarded the overall amount. Our number one uh objective is to uh be able to uh through a series of grants, identify the uh the site contaminants, get them removed and relocate the recycling center on the uh that it's a ten-acre site on uh four forty-one uh near the railroad tracks. Uh, so this this grant would allow for funding for developing inventories of brownfield sites, prioritizing the sites, conducting site assessments, developing specific cleanup plans and reuse plans, but not to do the actual cleanup activities. That would be a future grant. We're looking at a series of uh three grants for this. Uh, I've worked with this in other communities, and it is very successful. And it can, to to be able to clean up that uh and relocate the recycling center and put in there, clean it up and have mixed-use housing would be enormous help for for north end of our community. I'm asking to this time that the uh city council would authorize the mayor to send a letter of support to the project.
You have a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments? Ms. Sacks, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, uh, we're down to comments of council. Uh, I spoke with Aldi a little while ago, and she was talking about the election coming up in a couple of weeks and the uh charter amendments that are on there. Uh, Ms. Sykes, would you like to say anything at this time?
I just wanted to remind everyone, I do have some signs in the office. If you'd like to stop by and get some for your yard or if you'd like neighborhood, just reminding people to go and vote on the charter amendments for the City of Lake City. I also have some handouts if you need any to hand out to anyone if you're going to any meeting functions where there's going to be a group of people, and you'll have an audience where you can distribute those. I also have a few um documents that I did print out. It is the ordinance that that provides the clarity of individual amendment as it relates to uh what's being asked of our voters. It gives the the entire ordinance, the entirety on one document, it's very easy to read. Through as underlying what's being added or taken away. Um, I have been fielding phone calls, so the phone number on the publication has been working. I'm willing and uh welcoming any phone calls. If you have anyone who has any questions about those ordinances or the uh questions that are on the ballot, please direct them to contact my office, and I'll be more than glad to speak with them and mail them information if they need it.
Good. Thank you. Uh, any other comments of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I would just like to congratulate the city administration and the firefighters, Local 2288, on coming to a contract agreement. I know sometimes when you bargain hard for a contract, you get some hurt feelings, but at the end of the day, what's important is that you get a contract, and it's no small feat, and I just want to congratulate our firefighters and our administration for making that happen, and I think the citizens of Lake City are the ones who ultimately benefit.
Thank you. I agree with you. Anything else? All right, if not, then we will be adjourned, and we'll see y'all in a couple of weeks.